The last time I was in front of him, I would go wrong to his temperament. Or my flat, I'm not sure what it was actually.
The last time I was there was when your dad and Steve and I were all racing.
Cut through the city.
It's awesome that time.
But you didn't get to learn each other.
I had a lot of video.
Smug out.
We were going to.
You would because I mean. Yeah. You know, I said, uh, didn't I kick off one of yours? It was an ex customer mine.
Maybe.
The water. I lived at the water.
Call the board of the September meeting of the Mollville Planning Commission. Uh, Mr. Grummer or Mr. Lyons, do we have any announcements?
Um, Mr. Chair, so we have, uh, no recorded plats, uh, for the month of, um, uh, or staff level reviews for the, uh, month of August. Um, one thing I will point out, uh, in front of you, there's a, a proposed draft of a staff report. One of the things that, uh, we've done, uh, we're taking in, we've got new technology that we started back in August for the intake of, uh, planning and permitting applications. And with that, uh, we're into, we're inputting a lot of our review process. And the output of that, I'm trying to organize into a report that can provide you additional information, a little bit more detailed information for each item. So I provided you a, a draft, one for the Fontaine Blue Center that we're going to be getting into later on in the agenda. Uh, feel free to look through that and, uh, after the meeting, if you want to give any, uh, advice or suggestions or want to give any input, feel free to, um, just, that's just an FYI. Otherwise, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. I have no public comments on non-agenda, oh, sorry, skip approval of minutes. You can provide a copy of those in your packets. Does anybody have any corrections to be made to the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move to stop the regular planning commission August meeting minutes as presented.
Second, a motion and a second, any discussion? Does it favor yes? Yes. Does opposed no? Minutes are approved. I have no public comments on non-agenda items. I will open the public hearing. We have old business for, uh, number one, a code amendment to amend, uh, ninety-four dash one oh two. Uh, memory serves, that was tabled, so that will require a motion to bring up on today's agenda and discuss.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion, bring it, bring it up to discuss. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Does it favor yes? Yes. Opposed no? Mr. Grummer, Mr. Lyons, do we have any further staff report?
Mr. Chair, um, as you remember from last month, uh, this, uh, amendment request is to clarify commercial design requirements in a C four highway commercial zone and then also to include wording in the ordinance to allow for architectural style metals, which, uh, are increasing in interest and popularity. Um, the concern last month, uh, was with the, uh, clarification in staff review, uh, under section D on the second page, design review. You'll notice, uh, we added a item, uh, in the box, uh, in under, underlined that says, "In accordance with, uh, the review guidelines set forth herein and in section ninety-four, uh, dash one oh one." So basically, the, uh, any, uh, reviews that would be needed would go back to section ninety-four one oh one. Um, and, uh, which defines what is staff level and what is, what goes to planning commission. Otherwise, nothing else changed.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Any questions or comments from the commission? Does anyone have a motion?
I make a motion for due pass recommendation to city council to amend code section ninety-four one oh two, contingent on meeting all staff, city engineer and planning commissioner comments.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Does it favor yes? Yes. Opposed no? We will issue a due pass recommendation. Moving on to new business, uh, the old water treatment facility at Mollville Country Club. Uh, Mr. Grummer, staff report, please.
Mr. Chair, I believe the, uh, applicant representative, uh, wishes to approach, uh, and possibly table this item.
Good evening. Uh, Roy Andrews, three Monarch Drive. The applicant would wish to, uh, obtain a motion to table this until, uh, next month or the month after, to give more time to work through the preliminary development plan and work out agreements with the country club.
Would anyone like to make the request of motion?
Chairman, move to table.
Hands, Mike, can we discuss or you want to make a motion first?
Well, say I would ask for discussion on the motion, so let's go ahead and do it before the motion.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, 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 you're, you're not over.
Oh, okay. Um, so what's the purpose of asking us to table versus just withdraw?
So, one, I don't have to go back through the, um, advertisement process and put out new signage and send out, uh, new advertisement in the newspaper and just give, um, you know, we went through this process, we couldn't even talk about it until we got the waiver. And so we asked for the waiver just so that we could talk about it. And now we'd like a little more time to work through the development plan. And that was a concern last time, even though we couldn't talk about it, was that we didn't have a plan, the preliminary development plan. So we just want some time to work through that and, uh, make some changes that the club has asked for and work through the agreement that would happen between the applicant and the club for shared parking and, um, access. Give y'all something to look at and staff would have a chance to comment on more than just the rezoning.
Would the sign stay in place?
Uh, we would leave the sign in place, yes, sir. But the, uh, if you table it, then that's the public notice that it's moving to next month or possibly. So, uh, they would not have to send out the certified letters, uh, as they did before.
Further discussion?
Do I continue with my motion?
If you'd like to, Mr. Fisher?
Give my guess, sorry. I'd move the table.
I'll second the motion.
The old water treatment facility, uh, for another month.
Have a motion and I heard second, any discussion on the motion?
Uh, you just one month or is it just?
I just said a month.
Indefinite, correct. I believe, uh, motion to table is indefinite, is that correct? Commanding attorney?
You can table to a date certain.
I just said one month.
One month it is? That's the motion anyway.
Is it, you know, is that fine with you on your second?
Uh, I, I would like to move.
Is that enough time? My que, my only question is, is that enough time?
Thirty days, sixty days, Roy.
Which do you need?
You know, putting together development plans, he's working with, with the country club, I tell you.
Working with the country club and we had a meeting on Monday and, uh, just to give legal time to draft, um, that agreement between them. And I, I think, based on the meeting we had on Monday, yes, I believe that's enough time.
Well, thirty days would help push it along.
Yep.
All right.
Leave the motion on the table. The motion is to table until next month's meeting, is that correct, Mr. Fisher?
Correct. Recognize it.
All right. I have a motion and a second, any just further discussion on the motion? The line clarification?
I'm sorry. Oh.
So just to clarify on the notification, they won't have to notify for the rezoning and the land use amendments. They will have to notify though, once they bring forward the preliminary development plan, which only requires a legal notice in the paper, so just to clarify that.
He's trying to get out of the cert file, I'm wondering.
And they, they've sent them twice.
Yeah, just, because we actually did it before.
You've done it twice?
For the waiver, yes. And trying to avoid doing it a third time.
All right, further discussion on the motion? Does it favor yes? Yes. Opposed no? We are tabled until next month. Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Move on to number three, the Fontaine Blue Center. Mr. Grummer, staff report, please.
Mr. Chair, the, uh, proposed, uh, preliminary development plan for, uh, the Albright Commercial was originally approved by Planning Commission on September twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. The approved development plan expired after one year due to the lack of activity and the applicant at the time chose not to renew. Uh, the current owner has a developer interested in purchasing the property and developing, uh, what was originally approved by the planning commission. Um, so, uh, they submitted the application and included, um, the approved plans from twenty nineteen and stated no changes were requested. Uh, the project includes a strip center, commercial type development in PRD Zone, uh, having, uh, special use residential land use, which location was designed as a commercial out parcel, uh, to the Country Club of Arkansas Golf Course Athletic Subdivision. Uh, PRD Zones allow up to four percent of commercial development. And being in the Country Club of Arkansas, the calculation is taking over the entire area of CCA and is within the four percent allowance. Upon review, uh, the following are the main changes from the previously approved version. I'll just point out, um, number one, the, in the rear of the building, there is a loading zone. The fire department, um, stated that, uh, was in conflict with the requirements for, uh, ingress and egress of the, uh, fire truck in the back. So that was requested to be, uh, removed. Um, so there's a, uh, clear width of thirty feet in the rear, uh, for access. The dumpster, which was located in the northwest corner, uh, we, uh, recommended a, uh, move to the northeast corner to avoid impacts to the adjacent neighborhood on the west side. And then, uh, changed the landscaping along the front boundary. Uh, the front boundary, uh, that fronts, uh, Country Club Parkway, you'll notice they have, uh, an open swell design for, uh, the, uh, the drainage to, uh, dump into. On the landscape plan, they had, um, uh, trees located there. We made the recommendation to, uh, make that a more, um, water, uh, prone plant, planting, uh, that would, uh, go there and then, uh, adjust the sidewalk location on the east side, uh, from the parking area. So, um, just FYI, the final plat, uh, for this parcel was filed in September of twenty nineteen. And no request has been sought to update the final, uh, the filed plat. So, uh, you will be, uh, acting on just the development plan and not a plat, uh, for this, this development. And that concludes your, uh, I guess I'll point out, uh, the, uh, development plan goes to city council. That is a due pass recommendation to city council. Uh, the other items, because it's a commercial development, is, um, includes site plan design. So you've got landscape and, uh, commercial building design. Those are approved by the planning commission and stay here.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Uh, we have, first we have item three A, the waiver request. Uh, anything further, uh, particular to the waiver request?
So the waiver request was previously approved in, uh, twenty nineteen by Planning Commission. Uh, the waiver is to allow for access onto Country Club Parkway. Um, you did receive a letter, uh, that was sent in from a resident that had concerns. Um, and, uh, those concerns, uh, were, uh, based upon, uh, items of, uh, uh, the neighborhood as well as, um, let's see. And, uh, having a reasonable alternative, uh, if this was the only reasonable alternative according to the, uh, the section. I, I point that out only because the, um, uh, in twenty nineteen, the fire department, uh, made, uh, clarification as well as the fire marshal, this go around as well as that, uh, they require two entries into this, this property for ingress and egress for, uh, for emergency access. And, uh, you can, they have to be two hundred feet away from one another and you can't achieve that if you have two accesses on the, uh, on the Country Club Circle side. So, uh, they are requiring the access on Country Club Parkway. So staff recommends approval of the waiver request.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Any, uh, commissioner questions or comments regarding to the waiver?
I believe those were the same, uh, comments that we made two years ago. And, you know, again, as you've never pointed out, uh, we've got to have two ways in and out. And that's the only place to do it. Plus the fact that the curb cut right there for the, the joint and street, which makes sense for it to be where it is.
I'd, I'd agree with your comments, Mike, that, that, you know, when, when staff recommends or we have, regarding the safety and well-being of the facility and being able to protect it and provide public safety, I, I think the waiver's in line. As staff supports it, I, I do appreciate her putting together, or him, I'm not sure, of her, thank you.
Her.
Uh, to put together this, but it's, that's what's driving the decision here.
Yeah, I mean, she did an excellent job.
Yeah, but it's well written.
Putting it to, uh, in, in black and white, uh, for.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that she understood, if she's in the audience.
She couldn't make it, uh, tonight, but she at least.
For the record, anyway, in minutes perspective.
Further questions or comments? Does anyone have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the waiver request from section seventy dash one thirty-two A, subsection four, to allow access from the proposed, uh, how many, what, how are we pronouncing this again? Fontaine Blue?
Fontaine Blue.
Fontaine Blue? Fontaine Blue Center to Country Club Parkway, contingent on meeting all staff, city engineer and planning commissioner comments.
Second. A motion and a second, any discussion? Does it favor yes? Yes. Opposed no? Waiver is approved. Move on to, I, sub item B, the proposed preliminary development plan. Uh, Mr. Grummer, further comments from staff?
Uh, no, no, sir. Uh, other than staff recommends, um, a, uh, due pass recommendation to city council.
Commissioner questions or comments on the preliminary development plan? Does anyone have a motion?
The only question I can remember in the subcommittee meeting is that, is we'd like to keep the sidewalk on that east side joining the bumpers for parking and there's concern about the overlap there and obstructing that, uh, access. It still remains the same as it was. I didn't know if there was any discussion. How about it came, pretty much, I don't know, I can't remember. Oh, Roy.
Roy Andrews, three Monarch Drive. Um, we did, we, we discussed that and I know we talked about it in, uh, the meeting before. Really wanted, for the handicap access, that is the route that gets them to the front door. Otherwise, I have to strut behind the parking space. We chose to leave that there and to keep in line with, um, what was originally planned, we left it behind the sidewalk. We did extend the sidewalk onto the north property line. And there is another sidewalk on, uh, probably, I guess, the west property line. There is a sidewalk on the other side of the property as well that connects back to what's existing.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions or comments from the commission?
Only thing that would still be pending would be what the city engineers' comments.
And the fire marshal has not had a chance to review.
The fire marshal still hadn't had a chance to review?
He reviewed, we made the changes, but he hasn't had a chance to review those changes, so yes, it would be pending.
I did speak with the fire marshal today. The main concern that I had was on the change of the loading, uh, removing the.
Thank you, sir. The change in removing, removing the loading zone in the back, whether that satisfied his needs for the, uh, access and he said it did, so he was satisfied with that. Otherwise, um, the other comments that he had, uh, pretty much, uh, go with, uh, the, whenever the building plans, design come in, uh, they make sure that those are addressed, uh, during the, um, the civil plan.
And we have a public comment card from Mr. Myers?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Uh.
Name and address, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, Andrew Myers, I live in one oh six Cali Drive, so I'm the third plot north from the street. Uh, and I was trying to understand the planning here. So, and I've lived here three years now in October, it's my first meeting, so I apologize, I moved. So I live here and me and my neighbors were concerned about this development and the fact it's coming back up. So about the comments that y'all said tonight, the current plan in place is for the sidewalk to be on this side now and not running right behind our fence line on the east side.
There is currently.
Red sidewalk.
Can you get back to that picture?
Yeah, yeah.
There's currently a sidewalk back here today.
Correct.
And we're required to connect it back to the front.
Okay.
Well, so we, the property owners are hoping that it'll be changed to the east side instead of the west side because we don't want them coming up behind our fence line for security reasons. Uh, we do want to keep the, I believe there's forty feet of green space in the other picture that you showed. We were hoping that it would stay in place.
It is, it is.
Okay.
It is.
And do we know there's going to be green space or there'll be possible trees to kind of give us a barrier between?
You can, you can see on this here, you have the densely planted evergreens and then the sidewalk jog, takes a little jog east to where it'll be on the new development side of those trees.
Screen about the trees.
All right, so there's no chance to move over here and the sidewalk will be on this side, is what you're saying?
It's on both sides.
Both sides.
It will be on both sides.
The sidewalk actually though goes out to the park lot.
Sir.
This is all landscape and the sidewalk jogs and follows the park lot around. So it's not right behind your fence.
No.
The la, the landscape is between the sidewalk and the fence.
Okay. Um, the other thing we were concerned about as far as the lighting plan, we would like to see if it could be submitted with a no light trespass, whether it's a full cutoff, it doesn't just flare out in our backyards. It just goes no further than the property line when it's, uh, and the last thing is there's a, uh, the storm sewer that's behind one oh two Cali Drive. There was an issue between whoever originally put it in. Um, it said, uh, I haven't seen it myself. It says some really bad shavings falling apart and some kid could fall into it, especially if they're leaving the school and taking this walkway.
So, uh, I understand Mr. Lyons has, uh, some response to that, but.
Okay.
If you'd like to.
So I spoke with, uh, Mr., I think it was Em, Emberg?
Yes.
Your next door neighbor, uh, on this, uh, late last week and we actually put in a caller C click fix ticket. So it's for issues and I've turned it into public works to go take a look at that. He did mention the storm sewer was collapsed in that area. Also, there were some, uh, fiber optic cables that were being exposed from, uh, due to erosion. So, uh, we've turned that into public works and hopefully they're gonna, hopefully they'll get, be able to go ahead and take a look at it and fix that issue. But he did, he did mention, as you've mentioned, that it was a fairly deep, deep hole from the collapse. So that, that was one of his worries as well. Um, add into the fact of your comment, um, he also wanted to make sure was the lighting issue as well as the, the, make sure the trees were densely planted in that area, so all the same comments.
I, I appreciate y'all hearing me and I think I did hear you say so, y'all plan on moving the dumpster from here to the south? I guess. I'd like y'all very much for hearing me, I appreciate it.
Mr. Myers, thank you for your very well prepared comments. Further discussion from the commission?
I, I think, do, do we have, I don't know what the ordinance says regarding lights. I know we have twenty-five foot pole minimums.
Eight, eighteen.
Eight, eighteen, sixteen, it's better than what I thought. So, and I don't know about the full cutoff requirements or dark sky compliance or some of that other stuff.
I'm not aware of that in the ordinance, but, uh, the lights that we require are downward and shrouded on, uh, on the building. So, you know, the intent is to prevent, uh, light trespass.
It wouldn't be required on the, that landscape island though. So, do we, do we have lighting or is there going to be lighting on any of that landscape? Do you know, uh, probably, Roy?
I, I believe.
On the twenty-five?
No, I believe they're through those middle islands right now.
It was like there's three of them right here on the island.
That's what I was making reference to.
Yeah.
But you could shroud back to the residential side.
Yeah, yeah, you can cut off any side of it.
Uh, let's have that as a comment then, sure it doesn't get lost. Mm-hmm, we could do that.
Are you gonna have, are you gonna have wall packs on the west side as well?
Yeah, I'm sure it will.
I, that I don't know.
So it'll be the same comment, then you can down and shroud.
You should be shown it as a potential drop through, so I'd, I mean, I'd imagine that would be the case.
Further discussion? Does anyone have a motion?
Motion, uh, Mr. Chair, make, make, make a motion for due pass recommendation to city council for the proposed preliminary development plan on Fontaine Blue Center located two two one Country Club Parkway, contingent on meeting all staff comments, city engineer comments, any other planning commissioner comments and staff will include the chief's, uh, and fire marshal's review pending.
Second, a motion and a second, further discussion on the motion? Does it favor yes? Yes. Opposed no? All right, we will issue a due pass recommendation. Move on to sub item C, the proposed landscape plan. We have further, uh, staff report.
As, uh, as mentioned, uh, earlier, uh, and on that, uh, draft, uh, report that I provided you, there are, uh, just notations that we mentioned, uh, shrub trees needed along perimeter east and north. Um, that, I mentioned the open drainage area on the south side, um, possible plantings, uh, something that's a little bit more, um, water prone. And then, um, shown parking spaces, uh, sidewalk extended on the northeast, uh, extend the sidewalk on the northeast corner to the adjacent property line, which I believe they've taken care of that. And, um, uh, and then note existing hydrants or proposed hydrants and utility staff, um, suggestions. That's all of staff comments. Uh, staff recommends approval of the landscape plan.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
The what you're seeing on the screen is not the most recent. I think what's in your packet is more recent. Because that still has the loading zone and.
Yeah, I, I thought I looked at the downloads, so I'll have to, I'll double check this, I apologize.
Because we did, we had the sidewalk extended, we added the trees and took the loading zone.
Is it uploaded on Open Go, you can pull that?
All right, we all have it uploaded. But this is the latest one.
Yeah, that's the latest one. The one in your packet actually is correct.
And I hear somebody saying that, uh, you're taking trees out of the south side?
Asked that we change the type of tree to be more.
It was asked to change the type of.
So if you, yeah, if you look at the, um, uh, at the development plan, uh, they have their drainage opening up into a swelled area along the front of the, uh, between the road and the, um, and the shrubs. So the type of tree that they have, I don't know if that's appropriate for that kind of location.
Cypress would be better.
Yeah. Actually, being that it's that close to White Oak Bayou, having Cypress and maybe some elements that make it look like the bayou would be nice.
Yes.
Further discussion?
We've got a, do you have a concrete sidewalk going down the trees?
Right here.
I know, and it says it right there.
Remove, uh, remove the, the note.
You might not be able to see it on the screen.
Yeah, there's, there's a little hidden note of concrete sidewalk that is in the line of trees on the left side.
I think when you moved the sidewalk, you didn't read the text.
We'll, we'll look at that, I get it fit.
Any further discussion? Does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed landscape plan for the property located at two twenty-one Country Club Parkway, contingent in, on meeting all staff, city engineer and planning commissioner comments.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion? Does it favor yes? Yes. Opposed no? All right, landscape plan is approved. Move on to the commercial, built, proposed commercial building design. Uh, further staff report?
So, uh, this is the same as it was last time. The, the main comment that we had was that it didn't show, um, whether if the mechanical devices were roof mounted or ground mounted. So just to make sure that they are, uh, they have the proper screening, where they're mounted. Staff recommends approval of the, uh, commercial building design.
I'd like to, uh, add same comments on the preliminary development plan for the proposed commercial building design regarding the lighting, particularly wall packs on that west side, make sure that they get missed. Probably is more appropriate there to tell you the truth.
Probably not showing it.
Pardon me?
Not showing it.
No, I know. It will be, well, there'll be lighting on that side, I guess. And it's not a uniform not to show in CBD or.
Well, the general note too, soft parking lot lighting, exterior building will actually be same type of illumination. So if we give it in one place, it has to be in the other.
Well, and also it's, exterior lighting shall be.
Be directed downward and inward.
Downward and inward.
So I guess we covered that.
Good.
Yep.
Good.
Good.
Further discussion from the commission? Does anyone have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the proposed commercial building design for Fontaine Blue Center located at 221 Country Club Parkway, contingent on meeting all staff, city engineer and planning commissioner comments.
Motion and second and discussion on the motion? Does it favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Proposed commercial building design is approved, thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you. Thank you, Roy.
We'll now close the public hearing and move on to council liaison reports for September 7th, Commissioner Smith.
How much time you got?
Not that much.
This was a long meeting.
Only thing, pardon the commission, please, sir?
It was a long meeting. First off, second reading of ordinance 1037, which was the, talking about the annexation of the land at Pinnacle Heights Property. Second reading of ordinance 1038, amendment to the land use plan and map for the same location, second reading of the ordinance 1039 was amendment to the zoning map for the same location. It was the third reading of ordinance 1040, which was the annexation of the land at Bradley Property, and it passed 5 to 2. It's the third reading of ordinance 1041, amendment to the land use plan and map for the Bradley Property, and it passed. Third reading of ordinance 1042, amendment to the zoning map for Bradley Property, and it passed. That was old business, new business, it's the first reading of ordinance 1044, amendment to the land use plan and map for the O'Reilly Senior Community Edition. The first reading of ordinance 1045, amendment to the zoning map for the O'Reilly Senior Community Edition, and then the resolution 2021-24 to approve the preliminary development plan for O'Reilly Senior Community Center was tabled for the October meeting. And that was everything involved with the planning commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. September 20th, Commissioner Fisher?
Well, going along with what Commissioner just said, we've had third reading of 1037, 1038, 1039, 37, 38 passed 6 to, 1039, that was all passed 8 to. Then we had the second reading of ordinance 1044 and 1045 for the O'Reilly Senior Center, and then on new business, we had the first reading of ordinance 94-353, which is the change in the ordinance permitting multifamily uses in R3 from permitted use in C2 commercial, C2 district as a conditional use. Go ahead and go, two more readings.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fisher, assignments for the month, October, October 4 is mine, and October 18th, Commissioner Winnick, that is yours, do we have anything further? Mr. Lyons?
So, I just want to clarify also, the, we got it updated, we had the dates wrong for October, just to clarify so everybody, what originally was posted on there was October 8th and 15th, or excuse me, 22nd for the meetings, it's actually the 15th and 29th, since October 1st is on a Friday, we missed it, so the first Thursday is the 8th, so everything is going to be pushed back one week, so it's updated on our website, but just to clarify, so nobody shows up on the wrong days.
It's still the 4th Thursday, right?
Correct. 15th and 29th for October.
Thank you, Ryan. Anything further?
And Mr. Chair, I will make a subcommittee for October, I'll be in New Mexico.
All right, enjoy your travels.
We can zoom you in, sir.
Outstanding, outstanding idea.
Teams are wearing several platforms, several platforms are available.
And since everybody's chiming in, I guess I'll also, next month, be prepared to add on the agenda for the election of officer, the replacement for the vice chair, I assume.
Everybody thinking of a good excuse, you don't want to do it.
Why is there a short set I need?
Railroad jobs haven't been known to happen.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second, all those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Adjourn, thank you.